Microphone test.
We can hear you, Mr. Flor.
Thank you. For some reason, I can't test my microphone if I'm on mute. Just want to make sure everybody can hear.
We can. You can go ahead and mute until we need to. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, well, good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission's session for March 19th. I'll ask at this time if everybody would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. What happened here? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. At this time, we're going to call to order and do a roll call. All the commissioners, with the exception of Rod Floy and Mr. Brand, Commissioner Brand, are not here at the dais, but Commissioner Floy is on Zoom. Commissioner Floy?
Yes, good evening. I'm under the weather and I don't want to risk spreading this bug to anyone else. So I'll be participating remotely tonight. Thank you.
All right. And before we move on with the agenda, if our planning manager would like to quickly introduce our new special counsel, that would be helpful.
Yeah, good evening, Chairperson Roberts, members of the commission. To my left, in Katie Wazinski's typical seat is Kristi Crowell. She's with Jarvis Fay, which is a law firm based in Oakland. She's going to be sitting in on the Planning Commission meetings here for the next few months. So happy to have her.
Well, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, all of you for having me. And yes, I'm in Katie's seat. And those are big shoes to fill, but I appreciate you having me here tonight.
Thank you. Okay, pursuant to council administrative policy, meeting rules and procedures, Section 5.2, comments by members of the public are generally limited, approved by the, generally limited to five minutes or less time if a large number of speakers is anticipated or if approved by the chair. Speakers desiring answers to the questions should direct them to the Planning Commission and, if relevant, they may direct them to the appropriate staff member. Speakers can also follow up directly with staff during regular city business hours. Please file a speaker's card with the Administrative Secretary on the form provided on the counter at the back of chambers. During this portion of the meeting, those present in the council chambers are permitted to speak on items that are listed under items not on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. Public comments for scheduled agenda items should wait until that time. Please note that the commission's actions are final and unless an appeal is filed with the city clerk within 10 calendar days.
Through the chair, I have no speaker cards at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we'll go into the consent calendar. Our next agenda item is the consent calendar. There is one set of minutes for the regular meeting on February 20th, 2024. Is there any discussion or do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Sorry.
Chair Roberts?
Yeah, if we can have Commissioner Flor indicate if anyone's with him at the time.
Yes. Commissioner Floy, can you hear us?
I can't. There's no one with me at this time. Thank you, Chair.
And then I believe since we have a first and a second, if I can ask April to do the roll call vote.
Sure. Due to the nature of this meeting and Commissioner Flor joining remotely, we will do a roll call vote this time. Chairperson Roberts?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sparling?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Flor?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. Before I get started, I wanted to acknowledge the emails that we received on the yard. There were quite a few and I don't want our residents to feel that we're not reading these emails. So I want to thank Victoria Sandberg, Kelly, I think her name is Kessler, Rachel Ortega, Kristen and Marvin Fuejos. Yes, and there are quite a few that I've received. Samantha, I don't know how to pronounce your last name Samantha, but I see your email and have read it. Ashley Barney, Amelia, a fellow Brentwood resident. And the list goes on. I just wanted to, Elizabeth Jefferson, Katrina Corey, Julia Meckhau. And again, there are quite a few that were just Brentwood residents. Alex Beato, Kaylee Stone Berger, quite a few. Michelle and Steve Clark. And if I missed you, my apologies. It's not intentional. Greg Sinara. It's quite a list. Jessica's, I've already said Jessica's name, Tracy Nelson. A and D Warrell. Nicole, I won't pronounce your last name Nicole because I don't want to mess your last name up. Jeff Parker. Hannah Armtrout. Caitlin Leonard. Megan McDonald. Ailey Butner. Amy Tilly. Debbie Mills, Danielle Campbell. All well received, all read, and we thank you for participating with that that we do here in Brentwood as our planning commissioners. So thank you. That being said, I'm going to move on now to our agenda item. Public hearing on the conditional use permit for the wireless facility. And we have Ms. Sarah to present. Thank you, Sarah.
Hi, yes, good evening. April, you're ahead of me. Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commission, applicant, members of the public. But for you tonight is a conditional use permit, CUP number 23-009, to establish a new wireless communication facility on top of an existing PG&E transmission tower, as well as the construction of a ground-based equipment enclosure within the footprint of the tower. The proposed project is located on a parcel owned by PG&E and is adjacent to the PG&E substation as shown here on the screen and is east of the Trilogy community and west of State Route 4. The project was previously approved, but unfortunately expired in May of 2023 prior to the cemental of any building permits. Just wanted to provide you guys some background here regarding the FCC and different regulations. So all federal regulatory authority has been granted to the Federal Communications Commission, or the FCC, which has sole national authority to provide all health and safety regulations associated with radio frequency, otherwise known as RF, emissions of wireless facilities. The Telecommunications Act of 1996 prohibits state and local governments from denying cellular sites based upon electromagnetic frequency transmissions, as long as these facilities comply with the FCC regulations and the RF emissions. States are granted jurisdiction over facility siting and in California, the state authority is governed by the Public Utilities Commission. Depending on the type of facility proposed, local jurisdictions have some degree of authority over siting, design and aesthetic issues concerning the placement of cellular equipment and related support structures. There are different types of classifications for wireless facilities, as mentioned, due to the middle class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012, which created provisions and aimed at streamlining the local application process for certain wireless facilities. Section 6409A of the Act states that local governments may not deny and shall approve any request to co-locate, remove or replace transmission equipment at existing towers or base stations, as long as it does not substantially change the visual impact of the overall structure. Due to this act, the city council adopted two ordinances to regulate telecommunications facilities, one for facilities covered by the act and one for facilities not covered by the act. Greater local control is given to facilities that are not subject to the streamlined processing requirements of the 6409 applications. This application does not meet the requirements to be processed under the 6409 streamlined provisions and therefore requires a CUP per the city's municipal code. The proposed project includes adding a 12-foot-tall top hat or antenna extension to the top of the existing 122-foot and a 122-and-a-half-foot-tall PG&E transmission tower. Six antennas are proposed to be located at the center line height of 62 feet and six antennas are proposed at 130 feet from the top of the, excuse me, 130 feet, which is on top of the top hat extension. The ground-based equipment pad is proposed to be located inside the footprint of the PG&E tower legs and enclosed within an eight-foot-high CMU wall. The project site is located within the public facilities PF designation of the city's general plan, which is consistent with the PF Public Facilities zoning district. This designation applies to land areas reserved for governmental offices and facilities, public agency offices and facilities and public utility facilities. The proposed project is a request to locate a wireless facility on an existing PG&E utility tower, which is considered a public utility facility and is further consistent with the designation within the general plan. As previously mentioned, a conditional use permit is required for any new wireless facility. This facility would be considered a new camouflage facility as the applicant has applied some stealth concealment techniques in order to blend the equipment into the surrounding area, but the equipment concealment technique is readily apparent to the observer. A CUP is also required for the case, for, in this case, for the wireless facilities that exceed the maximum height allowed per the zoning district. The PF zoning district does not have its own height regulations, but rather refers to the commercial office zone regulations, which states that structure is greater than two stories or 30 feet in height and not abutting any residential zones may be permitted, subject to a conditional use permit approval. It is important to note, again, that the PG&E tower currently exists and that only an additional 12 feet in height is being requested. The conditional use permit for a wireless facility may be granted only if the proposal conforms to all of the general criteria, as well as the criteria specific for conditional use permit, or excuse me, conditional wireless facility use permits, as outlined in the staff report. The wireless facility has been found to comply with all of the criteria. Given this information and consistency with the goals and policies of the general plan and zoning district, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution number 24-010 approving the conditional use permit 23-009 for the new singular wireless facility for AT&amp;T as conditioned. That concludes my presentation. We have the applicant on Zoom, actually. So if you have questions, I'm available as well as the applicant. Thank you.
Chairperson Roberts, if you could just turn your mic on.
I had that problem last day. Are there any clarifying questions? Commissioner Sparling?
None at this time for me. Not at this time for me.
Commissioner Floy?
Yeah, I have a quick question and it's more of an observation. I was just noticing COA 16 and the CUP makes a statement that indicates natural gas is neither a fossil fuel nor a polluting fuel. And it's kind of both and I'm concerned that members of the public will see this language and wonder why we're putting it in there. And I did confer with staff earlier and learned that this is the actual language that's in the Brentwood municipal code. And so neither staff nor the Planning Commission can excise this language despite it possibly not being accurate in the eyes of some. I just, I'd just like to point out to the public that sometimes the Planning Commission does have to take actions on things and we do not have any discretion in certain instances and this is one. Thank you.
Would the applicant like to speak at this time?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
We can.
All right. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for having me here. I don't want to reiterate staff's presentation, but I would like to explain a little bit as to why we are here again for reapproval of a previously approved project. And so with that, PG&E, much like I don't work directly for AT&amp;T, I'm a vendor for them or an agent for them, PG&E has their own agents. And around the time that this project was approved, the company that they used to negotiate these colocation projects had a change in leadership and that triggered a renegotiation between those two parties as to how they were going to proceed forward with colocation projects like these. And during those renegotiations, we were completely on hold. We were not allowed to access the site to perform the testing that we needed to do to confirm foundational information and structural information and things like that. But since that time, those issues have been resolved and with this hearing pending this evening, we have recent, we have submitted our application to the Building Department and so everything is going full steam ahead now. So hopefully, if all goes as planned, we won't be here again in another year.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm also happy to answer any questions, you know, that you guys might have. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, does the Planning Commission have any questions for the applicant?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Floyd, any questions for the applicant?
No, ma'am, Chair Roberts.
Okay. So at this time, I will open it up for public comments.
Through the chair, I have no speaker cards for those here in the chambers. At this time, anyone who is in Zoom, if you'd like to speak on this item, please raise your hand now. I have no hands raised.
Okay, very good, very good. Okay, then. Then I will close public hearing and entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved. I second.
Do we have to take a roll call?
Through the chair, yes. Due to the nature of this meeting, we do need to ask Rod if there's anyone present in the room with him, and then we can take a roll call vote.
Are there, is anyone present in the room there with you, Rod? Commissioner Floyd?
No, Chair Roberts.
So we will now take a roll call vote. Chairperson Roberts?
Aye.
Vice Chair Spaulding?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Flor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay, very good. All right, well, thank you very much. Move on into our second item.
Through the chair, we do need to get a vote for the resolution because that was to close the public hearing. So you may want to have a discussion about the project.
Oh, yes. At this time, I've closed public hearing. Is there any more discussion on this item?
Not for me, we've already, you and I have already approved this before, so I'm good.
Commissioner Johnson?
Not for me.
Commissioner Floyd?
I have no discussion, thank you.
Okay, well, at this time, there's no discussion. I think we can move on to, we've already...
Yeah, so what you would do at this point is just entertain a motion to adopt the resolution approving the use permit.
Well, I will entertain the adoption.
I make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Do you need me to? Okay, let me read it.
Commissioner Flor, can you confirm there's no one in the room with you one more time, please?
Yes, there's still no one in the room with me, thank you.
Okay.
We'll take a roll call vote. Chairperson Roberts?
Aye.
Vice Chair Spaulding?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Flor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay. Could we move on?
We can move on.
All right, then. Well, let's move on to the training for the Planning Commission. I'm going to yield to Eric Nolteus.
Thank you, Chairperson Roberts. Just like sixty seconds on this item. First of all, I want to thank everybody involved, including the Planning Commission, project applicants tonight, and the public for starting at a different time. As you know, the commission usually starts at seven. We did have a good plan for the special start time, which was to include a two-hour training session. But primarily be, due to the fact that Commissioner Brand is absent, and then Commissioner Flor needing to participate remotely, we just felt it was best to reschedule at a time when all five commissioners could be in chambers, just to make sure the training is as beneficial and as effective as possible. So nothing is needed on this item tonight, other than the commission knowing that we will bring it back to a future meeting. Thank you very much.
We don't need to take a
Nope.
roll call vote or anything of that nature.
All good.
Okay, very good. Okay, then, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is the design review application for an indoor-outdoor restaurant at 200 Oak Street. Our next item is a consideration for design review approval. And I'm going to let, ask Senior Planner Andy Smith to present. By the way, does everyone know who Andy Smith is?
Through the chair, if I may, actually, I, the thought occurred to me that I should walk up and introduce myself to Commissioners Spaulding and Johnson just as the meeting started, so I apologize for that. My name's Andy Smith, I'm our newest senior planner here, and been here close to six months now, actually, but this is my first Planning Commission hearing, so I'm very happy to be here. I have about twenty-eight years of city planning experience here in the Bay Area, and very excited to be working for the community in the city of Brentwood. Thank you. So with that, and it looks like April's on top of things again for me. Yeah, so tonight, we, this is a design review application, or what is being known as, or being called the Yard, or the Yard at downtown Brentwood. Location-wise, it's actually just around the corner from here, 200 Oak Street, the corner of Second. As you can see there on the map, diagonally across from City Park. The general plan designation for this property is the Downtown Specific Plan, which generally refers to the Downtown Specific Plan. The zoning designation, it's in the Downtown Zone, which defers to the Downtown Specific Plan. And then, within the Downtown Specific Plan itself, this property is designated as part of the Downtown Core, and the front sixty-five feet of the property is also in the retail-required zone, which generally limits uses to shops and restaurants. Here is the site, I'm guessing everybody's probably already fairly familiar with it since just due to its location, it is a former gas station, this particular structure dating back to the early sixties, but the site has been used as a gas station, or was used as a gas station back as far as the nineteen forties. What's being proposed is to convert the existing structure into an indoor-outdoor restaurant. And this is, I think, probably as good a time as any to mention that the use itself, an indoor-outdoor restaurant, is allowed by right in this zoning district. What we're looking at tonight is just the design, the design of the site improvements and the modifications to the existing structure. So moving on, you can see here on the site plan that generally the site improvements are limited to the front half of the property. So if we zoom in to that, you can see a little bit better. The center of the site is underneath the old Pump Island canopy, and that will provide a covered and lighted seating area, outdoor seating area. And then on either side of it, and of course along the sidewalk, will be the outdoor dining and games areas, where there'll be picnic tables made out of heavy-duty redwood boards and commercial-grade umbrellas, as well as oversized games. So basically, kind of a family environment for this proposal there. As far as the existing structure, the floor plan, not too terribly exciting to look at. It's an old gas station building, of course, dominated primarily by the garage bays, or the former garage bays, and a small former office, and later became a small retail space, and two non-accessible bathrooms, non-ADA restrooms. What's being proposed is to install a new commercial kitchen, a bar, an indoor dining seating area, and three ADA compliant restrooms. To accommodate those three restrooms, there's going to be a small addition at the back corner of the property. It's only, or a backwater of the building, I should say. It's only thirty-three square feet in size, and it is below all, well below all the thresholds for building in addition to what's considered a legal non-conforming structure. I don't need to get into the details on that, but suffice to say that the specific plan generally doesn't, the plant, the specific plan foresees development different than an old gas station building for new construction, but does allow, and in some cases actually encourages, the reuse of existing structures. And this does meet all the qualifications for that. Looking at the front of the building, and the camera angle kind of distorts the prominence of that front canopy. It's not quite so imposing when you're actually out there, of course. But what is being proposed for that front elevation? And the canopy, it's still there, it just, it doesn't stand out in this image. Can be replacing some of the garage bay windows with some new double doors, glass doors. There'll be a new low-screen wall on the rooftop there for the new rooftop equipment to screen that, and it'll be constructed using the same siding materials as the building. There'll be some small new signage, new exterior lighting, and the applicant's proposing to keep the existing tivoli lighting, which is basically a fancy way of saying the light bulbs on a string, decorative, kind of an Italian feel, if you will, perhaps. The actual exterior lighting, they're going for somewhat of a, kind of a country style. And in fact, the hanging light, which is the one on the left, that'll be under the canopy, that's actually being called, it's called a barn light. These are full cutoff lights, dark sky compliant. And we move on to the site elevations here. You can see the existing structure and then what's being proposed. There's that rooftop screening wall, and I want to mention here how you'll notice that it is actually positioned towards the rear of the building, which will reduce its visibility from the street. And in actual real life, you're really not going to see too much of it, this, these, as you do in these straight-on elevation drawings. The restroom addition, you can see there in the back corner, and the applicant will be maintaining these existing decorative elements, these vertical trim pieces. The new addition will basically come flush up to the back of those trim pieces, rather than this holding up part of the roof overhang as it stands now. There's, of course, the lighting, you can see the hanging barn lights under the canopy, and then the sconce lights on the building, and then those tivoli lights that will remain. The rear elevation, of course, not the most exciting side of the building. And just basically to show you, it'll be largely closed off. The, there's again that low-screen wall for the rooftop equipment, the addition for the restroom. The garage bay doors will be removed, the bathroom, the old former bathroom doors will be filled in as well, and there'll be a new door for, basically the back door to the kitchen, installed there. And then, of course, some exterior lighting. This area will not be open to the public. Also, at the rear corner of the property, they'll be constructing, applicant will be constructing a new garbage enclosure made out of earth-ton colored split-face CMU. Meets all the city standards, solid waste standards for a garbage enclosure. And the idea here, and this was actually at the recommendation of staff, was to go with the split-face CMU rather than matching the style of the building, so that essentially it'll fade into the background. You generally don't want to draw too much attention visually to a garbage enclosure, and so this will help to achieve that. As far as landscaping, there's not a lot of landscaping on the site as in existing, just given the nature and the use, and former use of the property. The size of this project falls just below the thresholds for where additional landscaping would be required, so no additional landscaping is required as per the code. The applicants have already actually replanted these areas, so you're seeing mostly new plantings there, and they'll be adding fresh mulch and maintaining those plants. Also, the fencing, some of the site fencing is already up, was done under a previous permit earlier last year, three-foot-tall horizontal redwood board fencing, and they'll be adding additional fencing to match that'll fully enclose the outdoor dining areas. And then that'll also, of course, be helped to satisfy the requirements of the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control for outdoor, for service of, outdoor service of alcoholic beverages. So, in conclusion, as explained in the staff report, this project, we feel that it is consistent with the goals, policies, and the applicable guidelines of the Downtown Specific Plan. And I put that emphasis on "applicable" to highlight that there actually aren't that many applicable guidelines in our Downtown Specific Plan, because the Downtown Specific Plan is, really does not written for this type of a project. It really just addresses new construction, rather than the rehabilitation of existing structures. And so we, as explained in the staff report, really fall back to the general intent and policies of the Specific Plan. As I mentioned earlier, it actually does encourage the reuse of buildings to help, I think the term that's used in the plan is "to get things going", I may be misquoting that, to encourage further commercial opportunity. There's, the plan encourages a restaurant row along this stretch of Oak Street. And also, it's worth noting that this project will help to fill, importantly, fill a gap between the Downtown Core and City Park. So we'll have a continuity of activity along Oak Street, where right now, there's, as I said, a gap. And so that's really a strong component to the Specific Plan that this, that this design will help to support. So with that, we recommend that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution number twenty-four oh one three for design review application twenty-three oh one three. And merely a coincidence, those numbers there, that will be to allow the conversion of the former automobile service station into an indoor-outdoor restaurant. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you very much. Does the Planning Commission have any clarifying questions? Commissioner Spaulding?
Welcome.
Thank you.
We'll have a lot of fun.
Good.
Couple of questions before, I just want to, I sent you an email, you responded to the questions, but I always like to, if I send questions, I like to ask the questions, same questions for the, for the public. So one of the questions I asked was, there are regarding, since it was a previous gas station, are there any gasoline storage drums still left on the property?
I know, the last underground storage tanks were removed from the site in, I think it was nineteen eighty-eight, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board has issued a letter of no further action required, also known as a closure letter, back in, I believe, twenty sixteen for the site. So basically giving it a clean bill of health.
Okay, thank you. And then the other, the other question I had asked about was, there's no alcohol permit being requested, or this one, although there'll be alcohol, and that is due to the Downtown Specific Plan?
Yes, restaurants serving alcohol up to ten PM but not later are allowed by right. Beyond that is where you get into a use permit, and they are staying below that ten PM closure time.
So if you're outside the Downtown Specific Plan area and you're applying for a restaurant, you want to serve alcohol, then the permit would have to come before the Planning Commission to be approved? Is that the correct interpretation?
I believe it depends on the particular zone.
Yeah, through the chair, it does depend on the zoning district. The Specific Plan is the only area in the city where that ten PM closure time is, is effective, essentially.
Okay. All right, and then the last question, can you go back to the conclusion slide? Because it had a good picture. Can we get that back up on the, yeah. So, because there's fencing around the entire property, right?
Currently, there's not fencing along the rear. It's just along the sidewalks and, yeah, basically just along the sidewalks at present. And they will be adding additional fencing, running perpendicular from the sides of the buildings to enclose those outdoor dining areas that are in the front half of the property.
So will there only be, when everything's complete, will there only be one way in or out through the fencing? Or will there be multiple?
There's a gate proposed on the right-hand side. You can actually see it shown as a gap there on the screen that will provide access to the garbage enclosure at the rear for employees. But in terms of public entrances, it's just going to be two entrances on either side of the front canopy.
And from that canopy, you can, I'm thinking of if there's an emergency, right? You have a, you have a three, I think, three-foot-high fence?
Yes.
In terms of if someone needs to go a different way? There, you can exit that through where the garbage enclosure is going to be and onto the street?
Yes, you should be, and I, off the top of my head, I don't recall if there was a gate on the other side, on the second street side. I would have to pull up the site plan. Would want to note, though, of course, that the Building Department would also be reviewing this for all applicable, you know, fire egress requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, I have one question, and it, I just want to know if you considered this, is I'm looking for that picture where I think they're going to have a corn, a corn toss?
Cornhole.
Cornhole, and it's going to be up against that fence, if I'm not mistaken.
This is not working.
I think it's on the other side.
Let me do this way.
Maybe.
Oh, the site plan, you can see it in, wait, which direction am I going? This way, there we go. Oh, so there, you can see the gate.
So where that cornhole is against that gray, that's the building?
Oh, I'm sorry, I should have pointed that out. The dark gray is the building on the adjacent property.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure of. Okay, I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Commissioner Floyd?
I don't have any questions, thank you, Chair Roberts.
So at this time, I'm going to open it up for, well, is the applicant here? Oh, please, come to the podium. By all means.
We're expecting a slew at seven PM, just due to timing. So we'll, we'll just get started, and then we'll take them all back to our restaurants afterward, I suppose. So I thought that I'd share just who we are, how the yard was thought of, and why we urge you to approve its design. Anthony and I have owned and operated four successful bars and restaurants since 2014, two of which are located here in Brentwood, in the streets of Brentwood, Vine and Grain and Otraversiamo. I would hope that maybe you have been there, and if you haven't, I hope that you do in fact come. Both of them have been quite successful, and we've made it through some pretty turbulent times, thanks to our community, so much that we've expanded into the Sacramento area with the Sacramento Kings. So simply put, we're good at what we do, and we'll versed, and we'll... So simply put, we're good at what we do and we'll versed in what we are doing. A huge piece of why we came up with the idea for the yard is that we are parents of an intelligent, vibrant, beautiful three-year-old boy. And anytime that we go out to eat, we, even at our own restaurants, we just can never finish a meal is truly where it came from. Whether it's that he wants to walk around or play with his cars or just throw a bean bag. We're rushing every meal that we ever have together. So the thought was born, if we could take all of the components that we love about Ocho Versiamo and Vine and Grain and put it together, but turn it into a family friendly concept, then we could finally finish a meal. I know Andy has reviewed the design in detail, but our biggest components is that we want the building to stay the same. A lot of the Brentwood community has made numerous mentions about that as well. Yes, we are adding the outdoor turf, the patio games, weatherproof stained with the wood picnic tables and the custom built booth seating. So we are urging you to approve this design because the data is showing that the Brentwood community, like from those emails, they want a location like this to come to life. I'm born and raised here. I recognize the value of a space that people can gather at before Liberty's football game or during the farmer's market or a concert in the park. But those shouldn't be the only days that are driving people downtown. We should have more destinations for families to gather and be together. This design is really common in other cities and flourishing cities, cities that are invested in supporting small businesses. So we're hoping that you can approve this so we can give the community a place to be hopefully at over this summer. If you have any questions, I'm delighted to answer them. And of course Anthony's here too, in case you have any too.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you for that presentation.
Yeah, of course. Thanks for having me.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Floyd?
I have no questions, Chair Roberts. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that. And we wish you the best as we move forward in this process.
Great, thank you.
All right. At this time, I'm going to open it up for a public comment.
Through the chair, at this time I have one speaker card in person. For those that are on the line in Zoom, if you would like to speak on the site, then please raise your hand now. Our first speaker is Denise Durham.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. Thank you for opening the public comments. And I am speaking on behalf of the Brentwood Chamber of Commerce. We are very excited about this, about this new business. We're excited about the idea of the rehabilitation of a cherished building that is honoring the past. It's giving us, it's giving this community an opportunity to embrace the present. And it's also building even more opportunities for connection and collaboration in the future. And so we very much are a part of wanting to celebrate all that this family has done to add value to this community. I also, speaking on behalf of the chamber, that's not just focused on the downtown. The fact that they are in the streets of Brentwood and now having a space here in downtown Brentwood, it's providing that opportunity to bridge what makes all of Brentwood phenomenal. So thank you again, and thank you so much. We look forward to being a part of supporting and, and doing what we can to build more success and more opportunities within the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I have no other speaker cards for anyone in the audience, so we'll go to Zoom. If you'd like to speak on this item, please raise your hand now. While we wait for this gentleman, Chairperson Roberts, I have no hands raised in Zoom.
Okay. Well, the young man can come down.
I do take it back. I do have one hand raised in Zoom. So let's go ahead and go to Zoom and then we'll come back to you. Go ahead, Chavez.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. I just wanted to speak on behalf of Alyssa and Anthony. I live in Discovery Bay. I frequent Brentwood often. And our town was one of the first places that they ever had a successful bar and eatery. And I just think that they are really good at what they do and they're an extreme asset to this town and this county. Now, all of Northern California, considering they have one in Sacramento as well. And I don't think that anybody will have any regrets if they vote for this to go forward. They're really good at what they do. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you. We have one more gentleman coming up to speak right now. I'm going to let you say your name because unfortunately I cannot read it.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I'm a battalion chief of the large metropolitan organization, Fire Department here in the East Bay. Been a member of the Brentwood community since 2018. My family and I moved here for opportunity, for the community, for, you know, the quaint downtown that it has. Since we've moved here, Brentwood has certainly grown, unfortunately not in the best way that, that we wanted. It's been a spike in homelessness, been a spike in crime. We're starting to feel a little unsafe around Brentwood. Morale is down. The only thing holding us right here, right now is basically interest rates. I'm here to speak on behalf of the yard and on behalf of Anthony and his family. Bringing another small business, family owned is exactly what Brentwood needs at this time. We need a morale boost. Having something like that brings a beacon of light to the community where we can bring our families down, bring our kids down. You know, we're downtown every single day after school, kind of walk around. We go to the park right out front. That would be a great addition to the Brentwood community and I'm fully in support. And I speak on behalf of, of many people and speaking in support of them. So thank you very much for, for hearing us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, just for the record, I did list quite a few individuals that submitted their excitement about the yard. And I do believe there were a total of 31, probably more than that, public comments regarding the item that was sent by email. And I like the idea that the community is coming together and supporting whatever it is that we are now discussing, that they're actually participating in it. So kudos to the community. And with that said, I'm going to close a public hearing and look to the commissioners now. Well, I'll have to take a roll call on that, don't I?
Two things actually, since it's not a public hearing, it's just public comment. I don't think you need to formally close that. So no need to do a roll call vote there. But I did want to ask Andy if you could just clarify the total number of comments that were received.
Yes, there's actually been, as of right at the moment, 60 emails that have been received, all in support of this. 23 were received prior to the publication cutoff and they were included as attachment five to the staff report. An additional 33 were received through 3:00 PM this afternoon. And those were forwarded via electronic mail to you shortly after that time. And then we've received an additional four during this meeting, all in support.
Very good. Great. Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay. Well, with that said, I will ask the commissioners if there's any more discussion on this, on this item, the design review. Commissioner Spauling?
Thank you. No, I, I think this is, in my opinion, fairly straightforward. It fits the downtown specific plan. It's not a new, there's no new construction. It's just really a design review since it's a by right product. So I, and since I've been on the planning commission, this is for a new business. This is probably one of the more, most straightforward decisions for, for us, I think, as a group.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
I think it's a great opportunity to have something a little different with some food, a little more activity downtown. So I think it's a good thing. So I don't have any further comments on, on this.
Okay. Commissioner Floyd?
Thank you, Chair Roberts. Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick observation, if I may. I've never seen so much outpouring from the public on an issue that came before us that was so universally popular. It's almost amusing that, that we had so many people writing in. I, I did want to just touch on the fact that there was, I am not aware of any controversy on this project. As Commissioner or Vice Chair Spauling has pointed out, this is a by right project. It's just a design review. I don't think that there's much chance anybody would be able to kill it tonight, even if they wanted to. I mean, I suppose we could tank the design review, but. And, and so I did note that the applicants had posted either an advertisement or a social media encouraging people to come out and I totally support that. Nobody is a bigger fan of public comment than I am. I've said many times and I really appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I'm a little bit dismayed that people may arrive late, expecting us to still be in the middle of the class that we, we had to cancel tonight. So having said all that, I just, I just want to caution people. When you, when you call for public support, it can create the impression that there is some controversy in your project or that somebody might be opposing your project when that's not happening. And in this case, you know, it's perfectly fine. I love having people come out and I really enjoy seeing people who've been invited by the applicants to come out and speak. I just want to make sure that people aren't being upset or, or worked up unnecessarily to think that somebody is trying to kill what is, you know, an obviously very popular project. Having said all that, I love this project. I, I think it's great for downtown. I, I have been looking over the design and I don't find anything wrong with it. I think, I think it's awesome and I don't have any further comment. Thank you.
Okay. Well, that's fantastic. Thank you, Commissioner Floyd. Commissioner Spauling, did you have something more?
I'll just, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion, but before I say that, I, I would say that I think we need your help in getting more people to engage in other issues because you did a better job getting public comment than we did for some of our other, other issues. Whether it's positive or negative, doesn't matter. I don't think I've been, I've been on the planning commission for almost four years. I don't think we've gotten 68 comments at all. So I think that's great. So with that said.
Please, I'll entertain a motion at this time for the design review.
I make a motion to adopt resolution number 24-013 approving a design review. 23-013 is further detailed in the staff report.
I second.
Commissioner Flore, is there anyone present in the room with you?
There is none. Thank you.
We will take a roll call vote. Chairperson Roberts?
Yes.
Vice Chair Spauling?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Flore?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Congratulations. We look forward to being a part of this. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we will go ahead and move to informational reports from committees and upcoming meeting schedule. Transplan? No one, yes, that's right. Commissioner Johnson, was there anything on transplan? No?
He's on design.
Oh, you're on design. Oh, okay. Design review?
Chair Roberts, just a point of order. I noticed on the agenda, it says Flora Ziegler, it should say Flora Johnson. And there was no design review meeting since the last time we met.
Okay, noted. Thank you. And there's, there was a land use and development, actually two. One overseeing grants. And yesterday we had a discussion on tobacco. And just tightening up the language relative to new smoke shops that may or may not want to come into Brentwood, making it very clear that we are really trying to skim down on, on those numbers. So that was the land use and development committee. And with that said, I will entertain any discussion on new requests. Commissioner Floyd?
I have no requests. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Oh man, I, I have a question. So the signs that go up that, you know, state that there's going to be a planning commission review, these wooden signs that you see throughout the community, when do they come down?
Yeah.
Well, can I put that on a further agenda item?
Yeah, they typically come down at the time of project construction, when that initiates. There's nothing in the code that requires them to come down anytime sooner. I can tell you, there's been discussion about modifying that section of the code over time, but it's, it's been that way for a number of years. So basically at the time of project construct, construction, excuse me.
So if it, if a sign, you know, has a two by four that's gotten chopped and now it's dilapidated and it's been there for a while?
Yeah, that's a good point. And then it becomes kind of a maintenance issue and we can work with the property owner slash applicant on repairing it.
I want to know how we can solve this. I know I'm sounding crazy, but.
We have to make it an agenda.
Can we make it an agenda item?
Yeah.
I can? I, okay. I would like to.
So you'd like to, you'd like to discuss that further, how to?
Yes.
How to potentially change it?
Yes, because we have planning commission signs from last year September that are still up, that I drive by, that got broken two by fours.
We can do that?
Yeah, if we can do that and have public, I think that's public works. Is it public works or community development?
That's a community development item.
Okay.
Yeah, but we'll bring it back on a future agenda to.
To address.
Yeah, two-step process. Exactly. Thank you.
Commissioner Floyd? Did I already ask you? I've lost my.
Yeah, I have no, I have no items.
Commissioner Spauling?
I don't have a new one. I'm just, the timing on the agenda request that I, that the planning commission made on my request when I had to recuse myself from the last meeting was a fairly simple one with really no prep work from the staff. So I was surprised not to see it tonight. When do you think that will be coming back?
That'll come back on the second, April 2nd.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and I do not have any new requests either. So with that said, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Do we have to, yes?
Yes, due to the nature of this meeting, Commissioner Flore, is there anyone in the room with you?
There is not. Thank you.
We will now take a roll call vote. Chairperson Roberts?
Aye.
Vice Chair Spauling? Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Flore?
Aye.
Motion carries at 6:55 PM.
Fantastic. And next planning commission meeting is scheduled for April 2nd, 7:00 PM here in council chambers. Have a good evening. Until then, thank you. Thank you.